I love your background.
I'm gonna say thank you and I don't know who you're talking to, maybe, I don't know.
Kevin's got grass and you have the American flag.
Yeah. So, do we have any citizens that we can tell, any participants from the community?
We do have one, we do have one, but there is no video or audio at this time from them. They can unmute and state their name if they'd like.
Okay. Well, with that, and now it's 6:06, I'll call the meeting to order and I do have a little bit of, couple of questions I like to ask before we go any further. So first and foremost, was this meeting posted two weeks before today? Or the public notified in any way?
It was posted on Thursday, which I had spoke to the town clerk and Ms. Kerwin from the Board of Selectmen's Office. And she had informed me that it needs to be posted 48 hours, approved, a meeting notice posted, and agenda approved 48 hours prior to the meeting, not two weeks.
Okay, well, my understanding was it had to be a two-week notification, but you are relying on the town clerk with regard to proper notification to the public of this meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So with that, we do have an agenda. Given that it's just the three of us and there's no really evidence of the public participating, I would suggest we can, if no one has any objection bypassing the pledge of allegiance and moving on to the next item on the agenda.
I'm okay with that if you want.
Okay.
So I'm gonna guess that one of you have the agenda in front of you.
Yes, I do.
Okay, so.
Hold on, let me see, let me pull that. Pulled up the wrong agenda, I pulled up an example.
So how are you doing these days?
I'm good.
Yeah?
Yeah, feeling better.
Yeah, good for you.
How are you?
Yeah, you know, it's always a struggle, that's all right. If it wasn't a struggle, I wouldn't know what to do.
Yes, absolutely. We're best that way, right Dave?
Yeah, yeah, called on to perform miracles every day. How do I get this done, you know?
Kids are back in school full-time tomorrow, so after tomorrow, I'll be in a much better condition.
Much better frame of mind sometime after what, 8:30 or something?
Yeah, I'll be celebrating by myself. I'll be celebrating by myself, nice and breakfast.
How many do you send off in the morning?
Two.
Two, okay.
One has ADHD and he's been a nightmare during this remote learning, so really happy to have him go back.
Yeah.
Kevin, do you have it or do I'm gonna bring it up?
No, I have it, I was just, I didn't want to interrupt you guys. So the first order of business is reorganization of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Can I answer for a second? I just want to let you know I'm taking the notes today.
Okay.
Just so you guys are aware.
All right, so I don't know where this reorganization came from. Unless somebody wants to enlighten me, but to the best of my knowledge on the chair, so unless you're talking about electing a new chair or you're talking about something else, I don't know what you mean when you say reorganization.
I believe reorganization happens every year after elections. We have, at least done in the past.
Okay. So Kevin, what's your sense of definition of reorganization?
It's typical of a board or a committee at the beginning of a new year to declare all seats empty and entertain nominations for positions.
Okay, so how would you like to proceed?
As the sitting chairman, I believe it's your obligation to declare vacancies throughout the commission.
Well, I have to say you catch me a little bit by surprise because I don't feel like I haven't been paying attention, but this, I don't know where this comes from, that everything starts at ground zero. But I'll say this, the chair will entertain a motion to reorganize, I guess that would be first.
I second the motion.
So after that, well, somebody has to say I made the motion and someone has to second it, so.
I thought you just made the motion. I'll make the motion to reorganize, have a reorganization.
Okay.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, so I'll entertain, are there any motions to elect a chair to the Parks and Recs Commission?
Yes, I make a motion to elect Kevin as the chair to Park and Rec.
Kevin?
Can I second the motion as it pertains to me? Then I will second that motion.
Okay, so, so we've had, and I should have done this one on the first one, but I'll take a run at it now. So we've had a motion to made to elect a chair and we've had that motion seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, the motion passes and we'll now vote for a chair for the Parks and Recreation Commission. So Susan, you want to go first?
Right, so we should do all in favor of the chairperson changing over to Kevin Smith for
Well, that's.
Chairperson, say aye.
And typically with, I know, I don't know how much Zoom everybody's been doing, but with Zoom, state your name and your vote, just so it's declared on the recording, who's voting what, that way it's just not voices.
Yep, my name is Suzanne Cody, I vote for chairperson as Kevin Smith Jr. of Park and Rec.
Okay, Kevin, your turn to vote.
Kevin Smith, I vote aye.
Okay. So apparently we have a new chair and I'm abstaining from the voting. So that's essentially, we have, one, we have a quorum and two, we have a majority vote for Kevin. So Kevin is the new chair, so I am stepping down and turning over the controls to, or the chairmanship to Kevin Smith.
Thank you, Dave. So our remaining positions within the commission are vice chair and clerk, correct?
Yes.
I make a motion to be the vice chair. David Rosa makes a motion that David Rosa become the vice chair, is there a second? Hearing no second, the motion doesn't pass. Now, Mr. Chairman, Kevin Smith, it's up to you to make a motion or ask for a motion to be made.
I'd like to make a motion that Suzanne Cody be nominated as vice chair.
I second the motion and accept it, Suzanne Cody.
Take a vote, all in favor, Kevin Smith, aye.
Suzanne Cody, aye.
I will be abstaining, thank you.
And then the last remaining position is clerk, correct?
Correct.
I will make a motion that we nominate David Rosa as clerk of the Parks and Rec Commission.
Well, I appreciate that, but I decline the nomination, thank you.
And it is okay for one of us to hold both positions, correct? Because the clerk is more of a recording position. Or is it unnecessary to have a clerk?
About that, I don't know how that works, to be honest, if you're gonna have to. I will make, I'll make a motion for myself to be clerk. And we can find out for sure if that's possible. We need a clerk, I'm gonna just take notes.
Dave, do you have any input on that at all?
No, no comment.
I think for all intensive purposes, I think we'll leave the clerk position vacant until we can get clarification from the town clerk on the ruling on that. I don't want to make a nomination for a position if it shouldn't be done that way.
Kevin, will you check with the town clerk?
Yes, I will, I will send an email to Mr. Pacheco and find out what we should do in this situation.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so looks like we're all set with, for now, and we'll have some correspondence on that, but we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is announcements. I do one thing, I did reach out earlier last week to Ms. Kerwin from the Board of Selectmen's Office, just regarding the Parks and Recreation website, a portion of the website, town website. She did, there was some information on there that still contact information for like Mr. Ryan's for scheduling field use and things like that. So she just, she went in and she reorganized our portion of the page, updated our contact information, so our emails were available and then removed any of Mr. Ryan's information, so people aren't contacting him for no reason. And that's really, that's really it for announcements. Next order of business is old business. And the first item under old business was to discuss the remaining budget for the fiscal year.
Can I interrupt for a second? Just going back to, just going back to Mr. Ryan's, as he was the contact person for field use, where is that going now? Who is taking charge of that and?
Well, I've had a number of people contact me and I could not really schedule anybody because the Board of Health has essentially control of that. And so there was some discussion between the Board of Health and people who are looking to schedule organized sports at a couple of the fields regarding their proposing their method of following the protocol. So not to speak for the Board of Health, but it was my understanding that there's two, possibly three organized groups. And I have been given to understand that they submitted plans that were approved by the Board of Health. So then it became, just recently became a scheduling issue. And so.
Dave, I'm under, I was under the same assumption, I thought Board of Health had kind of taken that over during COVID times.
Yeah.
It sounds like maybe that's changing, Kevin, do you have?
It has, so actually, and I'm not sure Dave, I did CC you on some emails or you were in some emails going back and forth with the Board of Health. From my understanding and speaking with Ms. Grassi, is that if it's an event, so like something like the cow chip or like when they do tractables, things like that, that is still falling under Board of Health. But as far as sports teams, they have relinquished that completely to us, that it's under our discretion and they no longer need to oversee it. I don't know if it will come into play more so with game, like so Bristol Aggie, if the softball team was gonna have games, I think then they need to come back into the conversation, but for using the field for practices only where there is no spectators, we're allowed to give permission for field use if that comes up.
So practices only, but game?
Practices only if there's, yeah, if there's gonna be spectators, because then we get back into having to provide restrooms and things of that nature, which I'm not sure, I have to assume because now that Town Hall is opened back up to the public, that those restrictions are getting looser and maybe we need to start moving back towards, you know, the norm of scheduling, you know, having porta-potties ready and available and things like that.
Right.
So as of right now, we're still, any spectator events need to be Board of Health approved until we're told otherwise by the Board of Health?
Correct, that was my understanding in the conversation that I had with them.
Well, just as a side note, be nice if they published that or sent you something in writing.
Who was that, you spoke to Ms. Grassi?
Yes.
And how to spell her name?
G R A S S I E.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, actually it had come up because there was someone who reached out who was trying to schedule the fields for baseball practice. And there was, that's what happened, I kind of got stuck in limbo of whose jurisdiction is it under, is it gonna be the Board of Health or is it gonna be us? And then, so I had wrote out an email and I included Dave in that email. And the Board of Health had mentioned that anything that doesn't have spectators, we can approve.
It'd probably be good to know which field it is that these teams are asking for, for practice or whatever. So I, I'm slightly under the impression that the team you're mentioning was talking about Lane Field, which is probably, no, last year I got a lot of use, but I think this year it might not get the same. And so I'm guessing there won't be a conflict, we'll see. But I don't believe there's a porta potty there. So that's the key to much of this, is there a porta potty present at the field?
Well, this, this particular request was from Mr. Reposo with the, I think it's like 12 under AAU baseball team and his request was actually for the prep field behind the, behind Town Hall.
Okay, great.
So, but do you have a running copy of like some sort of scheduled practices that are happening there or have been requested there?
I do not.
Or has there been any other requests?
The people have contacted me, I've asked them to forward the schedules to me. And that is, to the best of my knowledge, that has not happened yet.
Okay, so he is the only person who is actively, actively has a schedule and wants to use the field, so. Well, it's gonna, it's typically first come, first served basis, correct?
Well, you might want to be guided by it's Dayton residents first. So if his team is made up of a lot of Dayton players, then you're probably good to go with what you just said. So just as a cautionary note, you may want to check that.
Right, and I didn't know if maybe, like typically if Bristol Aggie, for instance, if they took precedence over other, you know, teams that wanted to utilize the field, I'm just trying to look for the norm.
Well, I'm not sure about the, a norm, because the field you mentioned was recently renovated by Bristol Aggie for their particular needs. So, because they play in a league.
Correct.
I would suggest that they be given deference whenever possible, but you know, this is something for the chair to sort out.
Okay. And that gentleman who did put in the crest, he himself is a Dayton resident, it is a mixed population team, but there is a large percentage of the team that is also, you know, Dayton resident, so.
Moving forward, Kevin, who is going to take charge of the schedule?
Um, I don't, Dave, are you interested in continuing that or do you want someone else, do you want me or Sue to take it over?
Schedules should be something that, that appear, that are discussed in one of our meetings. So when we have the schedules in front of us, we should, my suggestion is that we discuss them at a Parks and Recs meeting. So when you get the schedules in front of you, let's, let's have that meeting and and see if there's any conflict that could make for undue, undue difficulty.
Are you okay if we called, say if we got a request for Bristol Aggie who, you know, probably has an upcoming season approaching? Are you okay if we call a special meeting to just briefly discuss that, vote on the dates and approve it?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Now that things are opening up, we're gonna have an influx of requests and.
Right, I just don't think it's fair to make people wait a month, you know.
Yeah, so just, just be sure you do your 48-hour thing, if that's the guidance from the town clerk.
Yeah, okay.
So Kevin, it sounds like you'll be the contact for a request.
Right, and I'll, I'll send an email to Ms. Kerwin and just have her update that portion of the parks page, so that way it comes to me and then we can, we'll share it in a meeting. That way I can keep it all in a folder and it'll just be easier to share that way, I think.
Okay.
All right, all right, so back on to the agenda under, are we, we're good with that part of the discussion for now?
Yeah.
Move forward. All right, so under old business, I have discussed the remaining budget for the fiscal year. I'm gonna try to share my screen and pull that up, but this is, this is also not my cup of tea, wrestle with the computers, not my cup of tea, but I'm gonna try.
When is the end of the fiscal year?
June 30th.
Thank you.
Are you, if I can't get it to share, are you guys okay if I just read off what the, what the budget was and what we've spent so far?
Yeah.
Yes, I am.
We might be better off doing that, because if I try to figure it out, we might be here till midnight. Okay, all right, so I have here the fiscal year 21 budget. The original budget was $23,100. And of that budget, as of 12/31, and I'm not sure if anything else has been spent since then, we've spent $30.50, so we have a remaining budget of $23,069.50. Does that sound about right to you, Dave? Do you know of any other expenses?
Well, I I'm, I think we spent some money on some eggs for the Easter event that have not been distributed. So, and we may have spent some other funds, I'm not sure why it's not visible to you. Like any money on repair of fences or any repair of any fields or, you know, because we have to reimburse you know, the people in the town that do, that actually do that work. So didn't Mr. Ryan's not forward you anything of that nature?
I haven't received anything at all from Mr. Ryan's and I did actually reach out to him prior to the meeting and did ask him if he'd be willing to participate and share some information with us, but I did not receive a response. And then as far as what I have in front of me is the, it's just the worksheet from the town administrator, so it's very basic and I'm showing that we have like underlying item 5240, it shows which is equipment, repairs and maintenance, that's where we spent $30.50. But this was as of 12/31, so I'm not sure, I would have to send out.
So, I'm sorry, I did, I apologize for interrupting. So they are talking about this new year, expenditures for this new year.
So under, for the new year, we're blank, we're at, because we don't have a departmental request, but the FinCom has allowed an extension to put in a departmental request, so that's good. It's just showing what we've spent of FY21's money has been. But again, I'll have to reach out to the town accountant, because I'm sure if anything, it's like you said with the eggs or or any other maintenance items that might have been.
That money spent, that's a, a that's something we'll have to deal with here in the near future, is my guess.
Right, so yeah, I probably should, I should be able to reach out to the town accountant and get firm numbers of where we're really at, because it's showing that we have $23,000 and change left of our budget, but we may not.
You may, when you do that, you may want to ask them if they have any historical data, reaching back over the past two to three years.
Okay, well, it does, we go back on this worksheet, we go back, all the way back to FY19, which shows, so for instance FY19, we had $24,455. And then FY20, it was $18,024, which I'm assuming, but again, I'll get confirmation that that is what was actually spent. And then it shows the FY21 budget with request was for $21,100 and that's where I'm coming up with what we have spent versus what's remaining. But we'll, we can, I'll clear that up and get some document, more documentation from them on what we've actually spent.
Okay.
But I mean, it's, and also too, I was speaking with the town administrator through an email this morning, just asking a couple of general questions. There is a spending freeze right now, so even if we do have projects that we want to explore, we'll have to go before the Board of Selectmen for discretionary spending approval, so.
Yeah, it was good of you to mention that, because if there is anybody from the, from the public watching or ever reviewing this, they need to understand that, that spending freeze was in place and so we couldn't expend funds.
Right, yeah, understood. All right, let me close this out and go back to all right, so the next thing under old business was just discuss site visits and overall conditions and/or concerns that areas maintained by the commission. So I, I've gone around a little bit, just in the past couple of weeks and just in passing through town, stopped in at a couple of different parks, just to kind of see what's going on. I don't know if we need to actually meet physically at each location and compile a list or if each of us wants to casually just note it. I think we all travel around town enough that we notice if things are need to be addressed or not. And I can give you a small list of things that I've noticed and a couple of things that I've reached out to, in particular, Mr. Ferry from the Highway Department about.
Okay, I, I would appreciate you going over that.
Okay.
In the, in the past, we have made it a meeting to kind of go check together. I think last time it was just me and Mr. Ryan's, but to go to each of the areas that we have and then have a meeting from there that's still open to the public, because they can come and then meet from there to discuss what we've done or what we've noticed.
All right.
We can do, that's just what we've done in the past, I don't know that there's a specific way we have to do it.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to do it in whatever method you two would prefer to do it in. And anyway, so you were gonna go over the list of things at whatever parks you visited that you felt needed to be addressed.
Right, so one of the things, and it just happened, a resident who lives across the street from the school lane playground had mentioned the fence and then there's quite a large tree trunk, like just off the parking area, but it is obstructing the parking area to some extent. During the winter months, there was a large tree inside of the park that the Highway Department had to remove for safety reasons. So there's one tree trunk outside of the fenced-in area that is needs to be removed and then also there's like a large pile of, you know, log length timbers.
I think this came up in the past, is that the tree trunk or the tree that is on property of the town or of a private resident? I know we had some issues in the past, there was a private resident that was saying it's the town's responsibility of removing this tree, this tree or tree trunk now. And it was discussed in our previous meetings that it was not town property, it was actually personal, private property and that we could not remove it, I'm not sure if it's the same.
I am not sure, I can ask Mr. Ferry about that, all I know is that if it was on town property or personal property, it's not on anybody's property living anymore, it's in a big pile cut up in the north, northwest, I believe, corner of the park. So, and it's, you know, within the play area, so I had just reached out.
Not in the ground anymore.
So Lane Field is, okay, I do recall what you're discussing, Susan, with regard to that tree and I, I have not heard of any resolution. Uh, Susan, with regard to that tree, and I, I have not heard of any, uh, resolution, um. And that's a difficult situation, because if he says the tree is on town property. Even though it sits outside the fence, that means that the property line would have to be recognized. And probably include one of his sheds, so, uh, I don't know what resolution is that, that's, and that would be out of our hands. Until such time as the tree, if that tree fell into the park, then we would ask Mr. Perry and company to help us out with that. But, um, Parks and Recs can't. Make a decision as to whether or not that park is inside or outside of the town property. Uh, but I have been over there to look at that particular one and, and, um, it, that, I think that. Property owner is putting himself in a particularly difficult situation, but, uh, again, that's up to somebody else to resolve. Uh, I think the park where the tree fell over, sounds like it's the one down by the river.
No, no, it's the, it's on, um, the corner, is that, we, is a. I call it school, the school lane playground, but is that what that is, Lane Field?
Alright, so yeah, so that would be one thing that we probably, I need, I should probably take a look. I, I don't know if everyone wants to take a look together, again, that, that part of it's up to you two to decide. What is the method that you wanna do to, uh, review the parks?
Well, that, the, just to back to that one particular tree, that tree is down, it came down because of a winter storm or some uncontrollable circumstances. It is all cut up, but it's like, I was just concerned about it, because we obviously don't want kids crawling on a pile of logs and having somebody break an ankle. Um, so I did, I reached out to Mr. Ferry and just asked him, what's typical procedure, is it, how do we, you know, handle getting those? Remnants of the tree removed, and he informed me that once we get a little bit more dry weather, so probably. The first, he was thinking maybe this week, but then we had heavy rains over the weekend, and then we have a little bit more rain later in the week. That maybe the first week of May, that the highway department would be able to get in there and remove that debris, um, so we don't have a safety issue.
Yeah, so it's still there, still running around.
It sounds like it is down.
Come down at this point.
Uh, Kevin's saying it's down, and I'm assuming that he's seen it in person, so.
Yep, it's, it's down.
Alright.
It's a big one.
Are there other items that you wanna mention on your list?
Um, the other thing, just at that same property was just, and this, I've heard people, you know, mention it on several different occasions, is just the. Fencing around that property, mostly, it looks like there's about half of it that's been replaced and then the other half, um. Let me just give you directions, let me pull that, then my note, my note up that I made for that. But there's a, a lot, there's about three hundred feet worth of fencing that is actually, that, you know, is pretty well destroyed. So, and actually, again, just asking, asking questions, um, to the town administrator and to Mr. Ferry. They're actually gonna, we don't have, the town doesn't have a fencing contractor under procurement right now. But the town administrator is working on that, so if it's something that we wanna address. In this fiscal year, if possible, depending on the spending freeze, or if we wanna make a discretionary spending request. Um, the town administrator is working on securing a fencing contractor, so that might be something that we wanna look at. Sooner than later, because it, it, and we, if we do a site visit, you'll see it's, it's pretty nasty, it's only gonna take one person to try to jump. Some sections of it, and they're probably not gonna get out. Yeah, it's the, actually, it's the, um, so the east, the fence on the east border is probably original or to the park. Or, you know, extremely dated, there's about a hundred and sixty feet of fence there that needs to be removed and replaced. And then on the north border, um, heading from the, from the, from the corner back eastbound. There's about a hundred and thirty feet of old fencing, but then it meets up with what looks like newer fencing that's been replaced, at least in recent history. Um, and Mr. Ferry did mention too, cause when I was asking questions about it, that the highway department would help us with removal and cleanup. Of those areas of the old fencing, that way we wouldn't incur that cost from a fencing company, that way we'd only, you know, be exploring the installation of new fencing.
So he's saying the town, his department would do that?
Yes, he said his department was willing to help us out with the removal. And there is some, like some brush and, and other things that kind of grown into the fence that he'd be willing to help us clean up, so that we wouldn't have an added expense to make that repair. But I am totally open, I mean, it, if, some of us, all of us, and any of us wanna physically meet. You know, make a day and meet and visit each place, I'm perfectly okay with that. Um, I'm also perfectly okay with if you notice something in your travels, just document it, I mean, we should take a picture. Then, if we send it in an email or whatever, so we have it, you know, recorded, um, that's fine too, cause I mean. Think everybody's got other stuff going on besides just this, so sometimes time makes it difficult to physically meet and visit all the properties.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that maybe it would be good to schedule a, another meeting and. Have us either all have individually checked out, as long as we're hitting all bases, then we've all. Gone, if we're not gonna meet together, um, to discuss it, because June is coming fast.
And obviously, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, um. Take care of all of it before June, that's unreasonable, but there's some things, I think, that are kinda like what I like to call low hanging fruit. And if, you know, the spending freeze is lifted, or the board of selectmen, you know, allows some discretionary spending, I think. If we have the money to use, we might as well try to get it done, because they're not gonna give it back to us, you know, we're gonna kind of carry it into next fiscal year.
Right.
Sure, but, whatever you decide in terms of reviewing the parks, I'm happy to go along.
Don't, don't put it all on me, I want some input. I, I, I'm, I'm so completely open to suggestions, or, you know, this is how, like, I wanna hear, this is how, you know, typically we've done it.
Typically, we've gone together, at least whoever can go at that time, it, I think it's a little bit easier, you have more sense of eyes, you're not kinda. You know, if there is a problem, it's not like, well, I didn't notice that, but I noticed this, and I, I just think it's, I think it's. Easier if we schedule a time that we can all meet to go from place to place, and that way we're all on the same page, we're all on board and.
Yeah.
You know, if we, if we can't, if you can't make it, at least a couple of us can, um.
And does it have to be a posted meeting if you're meeting, if you're not making any decisions and there's nothing to vote on? If you're just recording information to use in a meeting?
We did last time, but again, it's only the forty-eight hours notice, and nobody else showed up, you know, as long as it's recorded that we're going. Um, I mean, we.
It's just, it's a little difficult, because it's gonna be kind of a traveling show.
Right, that's up to residents to follow us, if that's what they wanna do. I think, I think the way we did it last year, or the year before, was we, we met first at the town hall, at the playground there. That's where we had the initial meet, we considered a meeting, we met there, we discussed what we were going to do, and then we started at the town hall, we had a listing of where we were going. We drove together, and so anybody that wanted to come was already at the town hall. Um, at the playground there to start, and nobody came, but if they wanted to, they could follow us around from place to place.
That makes sense, I think that's a good plan.
Works for me.
I do, and, and I don't want anybody to like go outside the norm and expand their schedule for me, but. I, I am available any afternoon, but like, uh, it seems like this will be a little bit lengthy. Would either of you be open to and or opposed to meeting on a Saturday?
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, I just think it's gonna be, you know, so, I don't think it's gonna take all day.
It goes clearly quickly.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna take all day or anything, I just don't wanna.
Sometimes during the week. I'd be surprised if it takes two hours.
Yeah, it's, a lot of places are not, there's not much substance there, it's really just checking the signs, making sure they're up and no safety issues.
Okay, yeah, and I, like, I have, I can bring my iPad with me, we can jot down notes, and then I can just include it all in an email, so we have it documented. For you two use.
And the value of that is the three of us attend, then we're all on the same sheet of music going forward from that moment in time. With regard to condition of equipment and the playground, generally speaking, and any safety issues.
So I would suggest we make it for the beginning of May, so it's not, you know, it's pretty soon, it comes pretty soon, and we can get, um. Started on that, and that could be our main meeting, we can address any other issues too before we start the, the check. That's what we've done in the past.
Yeah, I, I would like to jump on it sooner than later. Um, I think we might, because me being new to this, I know Sue's coming back into it, um. I, I think we have a little bit of catch-up to do, and I'd like to kinda be proactive in trying to explore. Um, being able to make some of these improvements just before the end of the fiscal year, just so we don't lose on, out on that money if, if we don't have to.
Right, exactly, so it's April twenty-six today, so if we, even if we met next week, it would already be into May. So we could consider that our main meeting.
I mean, I would be, if it works for you both, I would be able to do the May eighth, which is, so that way it's not this Saturday, it'll be the following Saturday.
Yes.
You wanna do earl- early afternoon, just to?
Yeah.
Sure.
Ten or eleven?
That's not the afternoon, that's the morning.
Early after, twelve oh one?
I, I'm okay, twelve, one o'clock.
Okay, so let's say one P M, and you wanna meet at the town hall playground?
Yeah, we can meet there and then we'll just kind of figure out where we're gonna go from there.
Okay, we'll have the beginning of our meeting there, at like the picnic table, and then we'll go from there. So May eighth, one P M.
Does that work for you, Dave?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I will send an email to Kevin, who is now, it's not Sue anymore, who is now the contact person for. Um, publishing meeting?
It's Mark Pachico, and I, I have it all like formatted, I don't mind submitting the meeting notice and the agendas if you want me to. If you want to, though, you can, you can definitely do it, I just. It's up to you. It's like, it's good for me, be, I, I like, I don't mind doing it, only because it kinda gets me into like how things work. And like, that's how I kinda process things is by doing it, so, I mean, I don't mind doing it for now, and then if you wanna take over, that's fine too.
Alright, that's fine, yeah, cause we don't even know about the position at this point, um, so we'll have to have an, like a formal agenda for that day.
Alright, so the next thing under old business was to, um, discuss the five-year plan. And when I say discuss the five-year plan, I had reached out to the town administrator and, um. His assistant to try to, Dave, are you aware of the whereabouts of the five-year plan? It was mentioned in your meeting last October about submitting it, but I'm not sure that it was even submitted.
I think that and other things have been submitted in the past, and, uh, sometimes I get a phone call. It says that we don't have anything, can you submit something, and I write something up and send it in. Uh, why the record of it isn't there today, I don't, I don't know why, but, um.
Well, they didn't say they didn't have it, I just haven't received a reply saying that they did have it.
Yeah.
Can I just refer a second, I'd say to excuse myself for a minute, I'll be right back.
Yeah. So, um, let's contemplate the thought of a five-year plan for a minute. Is there any thoughts that jump to your mind?
Well, I think. I hate to say in a five-year plan, but obviously revisiting the North Dayton Playground is tops on the list of things that. I think everybody wants to accomplish, um, and then for myself, I typically, I wanna see some. More inclusive opportunities, you know, throughout all of our, um, playgrounds addressed, but. You've been at it for quite a bit, so I think you have, might more have more insight of, or at least the direction that things were heading in. Up to this point.
Well. There has been some discussion about making a, a small park at the, uh, at the end of Lincoln Avenue. Just beyond where the dams are, right at the intersection there, across from Johnny's Market, or what used to be called Johnny's Market. And, uh, so that could be part of a five-year plan. Uh, a fence would have to be moved to back toward the river and maybe put on a picnic table or something. So I, I guess there's a number of things could be encompassed in a five-year plan, that you could be, it could be some, um, generalities. Some, uh, thoughts that way, I don't know how specifically we really have to be.
Yeah, I agree.
So, uh, if you submit one, uh, you, you are, at least from my perspective. You are welcome to take license and, and, uh, and I, I, I wanna say poetic license, but, you know. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I can work on something and then maybe not, not at the May eighth meeting, but maybe like our, our meeting following that. Um, I can send it to all of you, send it to you both to review, and then we can, well, obviously, we're gonna vote on it before it gets submitted to. Anyone else, so, but I, I'd be happy to work on some of that, and then also too, if. Either of you have ideas or things that you'd like to see added into it, just shoot me an email, so we can, just something like that, so. You know, it's on my radar to add it in there. Now, when you say, uh, a park down there, are we talking like more like, uh, not necessarily a playground, but just like a seating area type park, just an open space park?
Some, some limited seating, so, um, a couple of folks have mentioned that. There's a piece of, uh, land that, um, because of a fence along the sidewalk, they're not able to go in and. Enjoy this area that overlooks the water, and as you might imagine, you know. Sitting someplace where you can overlook a river or a part of an ocean or something is, you know, something people generally desire. So, um, and, so it's come up from time to time, and so that can be in your long range.
And I'm assuming that that property right now is a town-owned property, but not necessarily a Parks and Recreation property?
Uh, it's not.
I missed, where, where are we talking?
We're talking at the end of Lincoln Avenue, across from Johnny's Market. There's some folks have, you know, indicated how much they'd like to see a small park there. Maybe something, um, not unlike what we have down on the Dayton side of the Dayton Berkeley Bridge. You know, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, stuff like that is nice, you know, just, just like you said, just to take a break, relax, sit, you know, enjoy the, the water. I'm all for that.
And there's always this discussion about. Open space, which, uh. I won't say, I'll just put that word in there, and, uh, I think people are looking for someplace to walk their dog, or go for a walk with their families. Or something like that, with, uh, without actually owning the property themselves, um. But that, you know, it's, it raises various complications and it requires some space. We do have a number of places where people can walk, and they can walk with their dog on a leash, I believe. So, you know, we have the Dayton Woods, which is probably not visited very much at all. Except for the people who probably live immediately adjacent to it. Um, and then we have a couple of other, you know, long walks really, that maybe people are just not aware of them. Maybe we should, uh, publish a map and say this place here is ideal for a family walk, or is your dog's on a leash? Good, so.
Yeah, I'm actually, besides, I'm also, I'm on the Open Space Committee, and we just submitted the Open Space, Space Planets. In the process of getting approved by the Board of Selectmen, and then it's gonna go move on to the state. We actually, we met just before this meeting, and we're kinda waiting for correspondence, so that's something too. Maybe at some point when we're talking about that, I don't think it has to be a subcommittee, but maybe we invite Alan, who's the chair of that committee, to come in and probably. Give us some guidance on. One available space to expand, you know, Parks and Recreation opportunities, but also a little bit of guidance on, uh, areas. That could be used for different things, so.
That may be, uh, one of those, I, I don't know, I don't know this absolutely, but it may be one of those places where you have to. Step down and not vote, because you have a place on that committee. Just a thought going forward.
It might be worth inviting Alan to come in and. Maybe to a meeting of ours to talk about what is available and what options are.
Right, one nice thing. Right. One nice thing about what's happened in that um committee and once the that plan is um approved by the state is it opens up a fair amount of grant opportunities, which actually would tie directly into, you know, our our commission. So that's by them doing that work, it's it's actually helped us in the in the long term. So that's good. All right. All right. Are you ready to move on to new business? I think new business, we can kind of keep brief because um it's just things that I um added in there quick. So under new business, my first thing was um to explore and discuss a summer children's concert in the park. So obviously, everybody loves the things that the Parks Department has always done with the Easter egg hunt and things like that. But because of COVID and for other reasons, we haven't been able to do those things. So I think even if we if we look into that, um it might be an opportunity to get everybody together outside. Um, if we use the field behind Town Hall, it's plenty big enough that everybody can social distance if ju going by whatever the guidelines are at that time will obviously be at them. Um, we'll have to go through the Board of Health to get their recommendations and their approval for such a thing. But um, I think that's something because we've been so absent of community interaction in the parks um over the last year because of the pandemic. It would be a nice thing for us to fund and put on um for you know, it'd be mostly for the kids, but I think the adults will enjoy it, too.
As part of the discussion, I it it's been my position in the past that like the Easter egg hunt, it should really be turned over to um. It's one thing for us to fund some of the material going into it. It's another thing for us to have direct uh oversight and management of it. And I've often thought and suggested that we really uh invite some other organization to be the hands on folks of and conduct it. And uh I I just don't uh I've sort of like never agreed with this business of of Parks and Recs Commission sort of being hands on for these things. It it's happened in the past and um um, it's just, I think it's perhaps a philosophical difference of opinion. So but after you've done a few of them, you go, you know, we don't have enough hands to do it well. So but other organizations do, and they might be, they might be a church organization, it might be whatever. But they uh they might be able to bring more manpower and uh perhaps better organization to it. And uh, and I I I'm a little more comfortable with that.
But I and I understand. So I've been involved with, say, for instance, I was involved for a long time with an A K C Dog Club where we had field events, we had dog shows, and it's the, you know, the same couple people that show up and do everything for those type of things. And where even there's only three of us, so obviously we're not an army. We can't do anything either. I guess my one question in regards to an event like this, because I'm not sure if it's if it's allowed, is could we as the as the Parks Commission actually say if we wanted to book a performance? Can we fund that performance so that it does happen and then bring in, say, a group like the Friends of the Library or the Lions Club to actually, you know, put it all together?
I I think the question from my perspective is, what part of it are we funding? And um
Well, like say.
So yeah, I in theory, the answer is um good observation. Uh, when we get down to practice, we probably want to be careful with what part of that we fund. I'll just as a cautionary note.
Okay.
Maybe it's worth dividing a few of these groups to a meeting to discuss it and see if they have any interest in partaking or.
My my only thought was, I know that we do have. So let me let me pull this back up real quick. So I'm looking at it. We do have um part of our bu our typical budget is says recreational. I mean, I don't know how. I guess it's how you interpret the use of our of our budget. Like, so so Dave, I guess the best question asked is, so what do we typically um provide for the Easter egg hunt? Like, because I like you said, you bought eggs.
Right, we buy the plastic eggs and them uh and they usually come with a candy inside and um so that's where we're we're paying for the material that gets handed out. But um in the earlier years of my experience was they had a lot more manpower. There was a lot more uh for whatever reason thus uh at least one of the commissioners had um access to uh more help. And that uh with that person's departure that uh tended to fade away. So uh.
We still had quite a few volunteers after Heidi left. Uh, oh, and then we had the Boy Scout. You know, we really needed help to to set it up. Um, I I feel like that's why I'm thinking if we if we invite the Garden Club or the Friends of the Library or whoever to this particular meeting when we discuss it and see if there's any interest in their participation, you know, it could be valuable for them, too.
Right. So.
Funding, but just in the in the hands on assistance.
Right. Well, let's I've just for an example, so like a typical like so a children's concert, a typical children's concert performance is usually in the neighborhood of six to seven hundred dollars. So I think I that's what I guess that's what I'm asking is do we have, is it okay for us to say pay for the just the performance? And then anything that those groups, whether it be the Lions, Friends, whoever it may be, they can add whatever they want to it to um, you know, fundraise for themselves, but they wouldn't be on the hook for that money, because I I just think it's a good thing to do for the community, whether or not um you know, it's a fundraiser or not. I just I I wouldn't want to put one of those groups on the hook to sell tickets.
Right.
Um, and there's not really a lot of setup for a children's concert. It's pretty much show up, sit on your seat, sit in the lawn, whatever, however we want to configure it and listen and enjoy.
Right. And it can always grow over years, too. I mean, if somebody wants to come and sell food, that's their own. Like, I'm thinking of um Somerset Celebrates America.
Right. And well, and they do like things like that open air market and things of that nature, but.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, well, um, by again, by way of suggestion, you might want to put something on the Titan website that says that um you know, we're we're looking at these things and we're open to suggestions in some fashion and uh and uh, so we get to the other side of this thing that we clearly have opened it up to everybody as opposed to how come you picked this one or how come you picked that one?
Right.
So we give every we open it up. Anybody who's reading that page, they have lots of time to look at it and decide whether or not they want to make a suggestion or how they want to be a player in the event. And uh, it's probably a good way for us to stay out of trouble and uh be able to answer the mail after the event, just as a thought.
Yeah, I mean, I I agree. And again, like we have the on that note, we have the entire track. So it's like any group that wants to show up, throw up a table, share and you know, talk with people, share information. Please come down and do it. But while you're there, we're gonna have this concert for the kids to, you know.
Right.
Right.
To enjoy. So. All right. I just wanted to kind of put it out there and for more for feelers and see if you guys were interested in at least exploring it.
Yeah.
So, all right. Um, the next thing under new business, which I feel like probably should have been maybe more of an announcement, but the um the Inclusive Playground Joint Task Force, which Dave, you're familiar with. I think you came to, but I think it was maybe it was just a C O D meeting that you and Mr. Ryan sat in on, right? I don't think it was the task force.
Right, so unfortunately, the subject matter is uh I want to say I don't really want to say sore point, but I think that that uh that it is. And um it is my understanding and belief that Mr. Ryan's put in a great deal of good effort, sincere effort and honest effort in the business of coordinating the uh construction of a playground in North Dayton and that other folks, for whatever reason, interceded and essentially um had all those efforts uh thrown in the trash can. So um it is in that effort uh um and performance by Mr. Gale, I guess, uh is really poison the atmosphere. And he he I don't know if he realized what he was doing, uh, but uh, we're there now. And uh, sort of um how we you know, it's going to be a little bit of effort to get past that. So I I I, you know, the North Dayton Playground in my mind is now a blank sheet. And if someone were to ask me my opinion, I would say that we should have a very scaled down version.
I I I agree a hundred and ten percent with you. And I think so. There was a lot of, I think, miscue miscued information and murmurs going on during that whole process. Um, I, you know, prior to this, as a just a private citizen of the town, I I've talked to Mr. Ryan's on multiple occasions about that and thanked him for the work that he put into it. And I think it we got like you were saying, I think it got brought up in the wrong way and maybe in the wrong place. But I think we all just kind of wanted to take a minute to revisit that. Um, that's always been my personal opinion that I thought it was a little bit too much of a playground for that particular site. But obviously, that's for the three of us to decide when we revisit it. Um, and then the reason why the the Inclusive Playground Joint Task Force was created, which was created as a subcommittee of um the Commission on Disability and you were invited, Dave. Uh, and so was Mr. Ryan's at the time when he was still a a member was that Jonathan, who is the ADA Coordinator for the town, is like he's like an encyclopedia. Um, sometimes like the delivery may be a little, you know, off putting for somebody um who doesn't know him very well. Um, but he is his wealth of knowledge is just incredible. It's instead of having to go to some sort of handbook or some guidelines on the internet, you can pick up the phone and ask Jonathan, and he's going to give you the answer. So he's like an incredible resource to have for that to make sure um that we do, you know, hit all our marks. One, I actually him and I were just talking, having a friendly conversation last night about playground surfaces, because it came up. Um, obviously, everybody, everything you see now is rubber bound. Everybody wants to use rubber bound. Um, Rubber Bound has latex. There's a ton of people have latex allergies, so it's not always the best surface to use. Sometimes you need to use like a compacted mulch, which still meets ADA requirements, but it um it's, you know, doesn't have the allergy issue. So there's so there's so many things that that go into it, you know, besides, you know, just meeting the the cribs, the minimum criterias um that we we were thinking about. Um so that's why that was created. Um, and anytime that that the Joint Task Force has a meeting, um, make sure that you both have the information for that meeting so that if you would like to attend, obviously we'd love to have you involved in that as well.
Kevin Wood, Jonathan's last name?
Gale, G A L E.
Thank you.
And then the last thing that we have under new business is, and it falls under similar it falls under um similar things is the K M A report items pertaining to areas under our um that are maintained by the Commission. Um, I will forward you both. I was trying to pull it out of a Dropbox file and send it to you both. So K M A was a company that did. Are you guys getting a ton of feedback?
A little bit.
Um, K M A is a company that did a townwide audit of, you know, pretty all accessibility issues. Um, for us, it mostly is parking areas and things like that, which I think are gonna be is a much larger conversation and bigger scale projects. Um, but this just small things, like for instance, I'll I'll note one of them is um at the community playground, like there's no picnic table there that has an at least one accessible seat or a pathway to to that table. And also even the area for the wheelchair swing doesn't have an accessible route. Um, I filed some of the things in that report under the.
Accessible route for a wheelchair.
For a wheelchair, correct. Well, not necessarily just a wheelchair, any anybody who has any type of mobility hand could be a walker or me even a cane, you would need to have, you know, similar servicing for a wheelchair. Um, little things like that, that I think I again, I like low hanging fruit things that, you know, will make a difference for some people in town and is a small um financial ask of us to to fix up. But we what I'll do is, one, I'm going to try to extract that from the Dropbox, like just that one part of the report that pertains to our stuff and send it to you both in an email. And then I'll also, I have printed versions of it. So when we do meet on the eighth, I'll bring it with us because it's kind of nice to be able to reference it when we're in those locations. I mean, some of it is even as simple as um the gate going into the um tennis courts, it requires a ten inch kick plate on the bottom of it, just to meet. It's just little things to check off boxes to meet requirements that and it is a townwide audit through all departments for right down to the way that the town files paperwork. So it's um something that the town is trying to accomplish as a whole. So I think we can help check off some of those things for them.
Sorry, Dave. That would be good at when we go to visit these these parks and playgrounds to kind of keep that in mind, too. So if we have a meeting beforehand and talk about some of this, and then we go do our site visit, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll get I'll get that over to you. I was just having a little trouble, like I said, separating it from the rest of the report because the the whole report is like over a hundred pages long, and there's only about ten pages that pertain to us and most of a lot of its pictures, you know, picture reference. So I'll make sure that we have that before they, you know, I'll get it to you as soon as possible, but definitely before we meet on the eighth.
Yeah, well, to to borrow your phrase, uh, you know, those uh those few bits of uh low hanging fruit that we can accomplish um fairly soon with um moving back to the budget, I only would say that so we can, you know, uh, not only move forward, but have every appearance of uh doing things that need to be done.
Yep. All right. So that's that's it under new business. And do either of you have anything that you'd like to add? I mean, we obviously we can adjust the agenda if need be.
No, I don't. Dave, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
Oh, uh, what's next on the agenda?
Uh, correspondence. Which I don't think we have any correspondence because this is our first meeting of the three of us together. And then.
Can I ask for I'm not sure if this is the right place, but I think it would be a good idea for us to all have each other's information, best phone numbers to reach each other at and emails and um, I know it's been I'm not sure, Dave, um, how the best way to reach you is if you rather emails or texts or phone calls?
Like a phone call or text?
Phone call or text. And what is the best number, Dave, for you?
Um, seven, seven, four, five, two, six, four, seven, seven, five.
Okay.
So you right now, everybody has my email and you're welcome to send your contact information over to me so that I can respond either by phone, text, or email.
Okay. The cell, text, or call?
Yeah.
How about, I'm sorry, I'm kind of taking this over. How about you, Kevin? Just so I have it for the note.
Five, zero, eight, five, zero, nine, two, seven, one, three.
Two, one, three. That's your cell?
That is my cell. Yeah.
And you prefer phone calls or text?
I prefer text.
And mine is five, oh, eight, six, seven, seven, five, three, four, five. Text is fine or S one, I'm Lynda Yahoo dot com for email.
All of our email addresses have been uh and and only our email addresses, no phone numbers, have been um updated. All of our email addresses have been, and only our email addresses, no former numbers, have been updated on. The Parks and Recs portion of the town website also, so if somebody needs to get ahold of us, they can do so through that, that avenue also. So we have no, no other, no correspondence, correct? So the next thing I had under the agenda was acknowledgements and I just wanted, I don't, I don't think we have anybody else. With us, it's just us right now, right? But I did want to take a second and just thank Mr. Timothy Ryan's for his service to the community. Through the Parks and Recreation Commission and I wanted to recognize, like you stated before, Dave, the amount of work that he did and effort he put into trying to put something together for the. North Titan Playground, there's a lot of good ideas in that plan that I'm sure that we're going to use moving forward as we try to accomplish that in the near future. But I just wanted to take, take a minute and make sure that he was thanked in our meeting.
Right, and if we could send him some letter with town letterhead or. Maybe even a plaque or something to tell him thank you and to recognize his years of service to the town. I think that would be nice.
Absolutely, yeah, we can reach out. I use typically it's the, I think something like that would go through the Board of Selectmen, right? But we, we would make the recommendation that they do some sort of accommodation for him.
Right.
Yeah, and I, I'm happy to do that as well. Um, the next thing on the agenda is minutes, but I did not. Put the, I think the last minutes that the Commission had was from October eighth, I believe. And then I, Sue was not in attendance. I obviously wasn't part of the Commission at the time, so I don't think we're gonna, we're not gonna vote to approve any minutes. At this time, we'll start doing so moving forward in our next meeting. And then next we have public input if there is. Anybody, I'll just double check, make sure, see if anybody else is on with us. I'm not sure that there is. It looks like it's still just the four of us, so we have no public, public input. So at this point, unless you guys have anything else to add, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second the motion. Next meeting is May eighth. One PM, meeting at the Town Hall Playground.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor? Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good evening.